Thank you, Mr. LeBeef. Okay, anybody else in the public want to comment on this? Mr. LeBeef?
Mark LeBeef, 14 Lancaster Lane, Deputy Chairman of Planning.
I remind you, you're still under oath.
I understand that. At your last meetings, I brought up this application.
What application?
The application of Chestnut Ridge Associates.
Okay.
And I brought up that this application is seriously flawed. I don't consider these technicalities my son...
We heard your argument last time.
Excuse me?
We heard your argument last time.
Well...
Go ahead.
I took my argument to the Village Board because I did get an answer from the zoning board as to how such a flawed application could be heard. At the Village Board, I was instructed by Mrs. Olman, who is also the attorney for the Village Board, that that was not the proper forum to bring up that question. I was told that I should bring it up here, that I would get an answer here. So I'd like to... I'd like to know how somebody... When Mr. LeBeef was originally instructed to do this type of application, he received specific instructions from you, Mr. Chairman. And he was told to do an application on his property and mimic Steve's law use. He was told that he could not do an application on somebody else's property. Regardless, the... these forms have been signed that Chestnut Ridge Associates owns Mr. Slackman's property, has given permission, it names the corporate offices of Chestnut Ridge Associates. As owners, this is a totally flawed application, and I'd like to know how you can legally hear it.
Thank you. I'm gonna let our Village Attorney respond.
Thank you.
Um, I... At the Board's request, I thoroughly reviewed every page of the application. I would point out at the beginning that state law only requires that an application to a zoning board contain a notice of appeal, the grounds for the appeal, and the relief sought. The Village has certain other forms that are in our application, which we do request. However, in terms of being satisfying the state requirement, this application does contain a notice of appeal, the grounds for the appeal, and the relief sought. I then went into every single page to see if there were any... if there was anything in the application that I believe to be an attempt to mislead the Board with respect to ownership of property. The project description and the attached letters, the application in addition to the forms that were filled out also contains Mr. LeBeef's letters dated August 8, 2011 and August 31, 2011. Those two letters clearly told the Board who Mr. Myers is and what property he owns. Those letters in no way indicated that Mr. Myers or Chestnut Ridge Associates had any relationship to 30 Sephar Lane other than that it was in the same neighborhood. The project description form does not indicate that the applicant is the owner of 30 Sephar Lane. Page two of the application states that Chestnut Ridge Associates is the applicant. He did not fill in that portion of the affidavit that deals with the ownership of the property. It merely says he's the applicant. The affidavit of ownership and the owner's consent, again, does not state that Mr. Myers or Chestnut Ridge Associates is the owner of 30 Sephar Lane. On its face, it is my opinion that there is no intent to mislead or to indicate that the Chestnut Ridge Associates is the owner of 30 Sephar Lane or any reason to disqualify the application.
Excuse me?
Um...
Anything that comes to the zoning board is in the nature of the case.
Just clarify for the record.
It's in that section of the law dealing with the procedures for the zoning board. The word "appeal," though this is not an appeal, certainly.
Right.
But the requirement, state law requirement is the same.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify...
Yes, you're absolutely right.
When Mrs. Olman was talking about an appeal, she was referring to how the statute really is read in large measure, but that really this is... we all understand this to be an interpretation, a present interpretation of the zoning ordinance regarding the LO zone. So that line, which explains a little further what we put together. You're still over the mic, so you've got to have a question.
Yes, I do. On the same point, I mean, what you brought up, I agree with some points, I don't agree with a lot of the other ones. The one thing that you did not take into consideration is that the public, the public, received the mail that you were hearing Section 68.09, Block 2, Lot 24. Anybody that went to see this property would have seen the posting on a different property. I mean, this violates every principle of our application.
It doesn't matter where the poster is, the poster related to...
One poster must be on the property.
The poster states the property that is being heard. The property listed on the poster would be exactly the same as the property listed in the notice that went out to the...
Sure, somebody walked on somebody else's property to go and read the fine print on a poster because our law states that one poster must be on the property. That way, somebody going down the street knows that's the property. Okay? Mr. Myers' application is for Mr. Slackman's property. He has posted his own property. That's fact. Why have these rules and regulations, Doris, if they're not gonna be adhered to?
Because we don't expect people to trespass on other people's properties. I would never ask Mr. LeBeef to put any poster on 30 Sephar Lane because clearly...
I would never tell this...
He does not own it, and he has no right to go on that property without the owner's permission. So when you put up notices, the purpose of the notice is to notify the public. And as long as the notice is in the location of the property and it's properly stated, it's perfectly legal.
You can't convince me. Basically, you're telling me throw out on this...
They have an answer, please. Do you have any other points?
Yes, I do. You focused on page six. But...
I focused on page two.
I'm sorry, on page two. Um... How do you justify affidavit of ownership on page five?
Mr. Chairman? I'm getting tired of this. I don't want to listen to him anymore. I'm through with it. We're listening to the application now. Get rid of him. Well... Thank you, Mr. Banter. We've heard a lot of argument on this already. You've made your points. We've considered it.
Okay.
And that's all we're gonna do on it.
Okay. Then can I proceed with other items? No?
What other items?
Okay. Okay. You didn't want to hear me at the last meeting.
Excuse me?
No, it is okay. Because...
Stop now. Now, if you want to tell us what it is you want to cover, we'll consider whether or not this is new information or just a reiteration which we're...
No, I'm not gonna repeat. I don't see a reason to repeat unless you never read my documents.
Didn't I just say we read all the documents?
Okay. Look, there's been testimony given here. In September, Mr. LeBeef gave testimony that I stated was not accurate. Mrs. Olman told him how to perfect his application. At your last meeting in... she told him how to perfect his application by using the zoning code and going down the list of uses.
What's your point?
Now, my point is... I'm gonna get to it. If I'm not constantly interrupted. There's been certain items that were brought up at these meetings, and I'd like to go into one of them about the use. You stated, Mr. Chairman, at the September meeting, when we started to speak about... Is there a problem?
What about... go ahead.
I can't...
What about my... telling you to go ahead was a problem?
Okay. You stated, when we were discussing the Mr. Landscape application, where you told me it was not appropriate on the Mr. Landscape application. But, Mr. Chairman, you stated the use of Mr. Landscape is a permitted use in the PI zone. You stated that. And basically, you said that's the end of it. Okay, in later meetings, you said, "Mr. Levine, can you tell me when the use was addressed in the LO zone?" Now, Mr. Miller, I'm gonna throw the question back to you. Can you tell me when the use was addressed in the PI zone?
I will do that in my presentation after you finish, Mr. Levine.
Well, I get a chance to speak again afterwards, Mrs. Olman, because I'm gonna speak about your last presentation that was not accurate. So if... To end your presentation was to keep the record straight, and I think it kind of possibly could have misled the Board.
Why don't you tell us what you mean by that?
Okay, I will.
Hold up for once.
If you just give me a second, because I'm gonna have to skip over it. I'll go over to that.
Okay. I believe it was your item number six. There was a little confusion with the numbering towards the end. So I'm gonna just call it your item number six. If it wasn't, please correct. Okay. You stated that Mr. Levine and Mr. Mitzner have stated that every application of Mr. Landscape and Biosphere were approved while they were both in the LO zone. And that is not a correct statement. I would never state something like that. I just approved Biosphere. So why would I state that all the applications were...
We'll let the record speak for itself. The fact is, you've given us a lot of documents showing that Mr. Landscape was also in...
Yes, yes, I have.
PI zone.
LO zone.
LO zone and then PI zone.
Correct.
We have a record on that.
Okay.
We know when the... when the LO zone that Mr. Landscape is in was changed into a PI zone as well. Go ahead.
Can you reference that date? Well, I will.
Do you agree?
Mrs. Olman...
See the record. Go ahead.
You went on to say the only approval of the planning board for Mr. Landscape prior to the change of zone.
Zoning board, not planning board.
Planning.
Was it zoning, I said, planning? I thought it was planning. You said that.
I said planning.
No, but I...
You're trying to... Like everybody else in this room.
He's referring to what I said.
Okay, I'm referring to what...
Everybody else in the room. Stop interrupting. Yeah, you are. Yeah, you are. Everybody. Listen, let me give you a rule here. No one from the public is gonna interrupt anybody. Everybody will have an opportunity to say what they want at the proper time. Cell phone keeps going off, Mr. Miller, that's all. Oh, thank you. I would appreciate all cell phones. Members of the Board as well, I shut off mine. Are now shut off. It is inappropriate to have your cell phones on during these hearings. They disturb us, thank you. But everyone else, there'll be no discussions, sidebars. We can have sidebars with the Board. But the public maintains quiet while someone else is speaking. You're respectful of, not only of the people speaking, but of us. And I won't tolerate disrespect of anybody.
I would just like you to note that it's been said that I've had a lot of time speaking. I would also like you to note that a lot of that time has been interrupted.
Come on.
Predates my time. Okay, well now...
It's just ridiculous. Go ahead.
Let me go back.
You want me to add up your four hours and figure out how much of it was interrupted? It's irrelevant.
It would surprise you, though.
Does it?
You have some...
If he wants to talk to me, you continue, Mr. LeBeef. Go ahead.
Okay, it was stated the only approval of the planning board for Mr. Landscape prior to the change of zone. Now, you corrected Mrs. Olman... you corrected me and said zoning board, but actually I'm...
I'm sorry, I thought you were quoting me. You're quoting her.
Right, now I'm quoting Mrs. Olman. But since you brought up zoning board, I will correct it right now in her statement. She never mentioned the zoning board, but the zoning board was a part of this at the time. Okay, it was the planning board and the zoning board. The zoning board was just never mentioned. Okay, so anyway, for Mr. Landscape prior to the change of zone, when it was still LO, and I agree with the documents, she agrees with the documents that were submitted prior to 2002, that was LO until February 2002, and the only approval by the planning board, and I'm reading from the minutes of the planning board, February 1, 2001, prior to the change of the zone, motion by Mr. Levine that the site plan approval is granted to site plan entitled SBFAJT Realty Corp. Office Building. That was my motion.
Do we have these documents that you mentioned in here?
Yes.
Yeah, we have. They're all probably...
Yeah, all right. This... I don't remember. I've read all of them.
Part of them.
No, no. What I'm repeating here...
Well, I want to hear what your...
Was not my exhibit, just for clarification. This was Mrs. Olman's exhibit number six. And I'm basically trying to read verbatim what you told the Board. And I think I'm being very accurate.
What's your point?
I'm getting there, Mr. Chairman. I waited for the tape. Okay. Basically... I made that motion. And that is the motion that I stated. But it's being taken out of context. And I resent that it's being taken out of context. Okay, Mrs. Olman then went on to say, after she said that I said office building, she stopped it and said, "Not storage, not parking, not equipment, not material, office building." And then she went on to say I submit this as exhibit number, which I'm calling number six. Okay. The problem I have with this is that was my motion. But if you read my item number 14, my exhibit number 14 that I handed to the Board, that will explain why I made a motion to approve Mr. Landscape Office Building. And I just find that it was a little misleading. Okay? The project title was SBFAJT Realty Corp. Office Building. That's why it was expressed that way in my motion. Were we approving just an office building? If you listen to all of my documents that I present, exhibit number four was from Mr. Landscape where his engineer described the use for equipment and storage. If you go to my exhibit number... and this was back in September 29, 2000. Now, if you went back... and when I started, when I started giving you these exhibits, back, I believe it was in September, and I was told, "Why don't you just give the package in?" And my answer was because then somebody's gonna come up and say, "We only approved an office building," which is just what happened. And my documents, we just pushed to the side. This is all supporting evidence that we didn't approve an office building. We approved landscape use. My exhibit number six was from the ambulance corps, if you remember, stating the parking lot and the trucks and the equipment's gonna be stored there. And if there's an accident, that's where it's gonna happen. That's not an office building. And that was October 2000, received by the Village. My exhibit number seven was Rockland County Department of Planning who stated, and that letter was October 31, 2000, who stated that landscaping equipment will be stored on the site. My exhibit number eight was the CDRC meeting where the applicant stated he wishes to know if barbed wire fencing would be allowed. Now, that doesn't sound right for an office building unless you don't want to let your employees out. That was to protect his equipment. We were not looking at an office building. Your Board at the time, when you granted variances, Mr. Chairman, you were on the Board. Mr. Banter, you were on the zoning board. Okay? You were looking at a landscape use, not an office use. Okay. My exhibit number nine. Page 21 was where Chairman Ruben had stated "Equipment, storage, and loading and unloading will be in the rear." Exhibit number 10, which was the legal notice for the zoning board who heard the application. My exhibit number 15 was an exhibit to the zoning board where the applicant had decided to build a new garage and have trucks. And this was in September 2001, all before September... all before February 2002. Basically, what I'm saying is that the statement that "I made a motion to approve an office building" was not... I just want to clarify.
Well, you said it was accurate. You said that there's a background to it, so we got it.
Okay. And that's why I gave you the initial background. Your Board, the zoning Board, and the planning Board were looking at a use of an office with landscaping equipment.
The record shows that we looked up.
Okay. After Mrs. Olman made that speech, Dominic asked a question and wanted to know, "When was the first time Mr. Landscape came before the Board?" Okay, the response was that when it was still in LO zone. The first plan that was approved from Mr. Landscape was the office building in 2001. I am quoting what Mrs. Olman has deployed. Then Mr. Landscape came back in 2002 with a new plan. That's not accurate. If you looked at my exhibit number 14, on my exhibit number 14, to try to show you a timeline, it states, "February 14, 2001, planning board approval. 5/6/01, new building and storage. 6/10/01, moved new building west. 8/16/01, site plan for proposed building. 8/28/01, revised per August 21, CDRC. 12/10/01, building site changed." Look, the facts, if you sit down and read them, they speak for themselves. We were not entertaining an office building then all of a sudden in 2000... then all of a sudden, in 2002, it turned into a landscape business? No, that's not what happened. We were entertaining a landscape use right from the start. Basically, I'll just finish. Then Mr. Landscape came back in 2002 with a new plan. That was a revised preliminary site plan, and he came back, the zone had been changed to PI. Okay, that's not an accurate statement. He had come back in 2001, before the new law. We were entertaining equipment, everything else. Okay.
Let me just go off the subject, because this is how your meeting happened the last time. Mr. Stewart asked the next question. How do we reconcile differences between Mr. Mitzner's letter that states 2005 versus Mrs. Olman's letter that states 2002, as far as the letters from the Secretary of State? Mrs. Olman stated she's not sure, but that there might have been, that there were other zone changes from LO to PI. That, I'd like to know what they were, because I don't recall any. That's the only zone change from LO to PI that I ever remember happened. So, I don't think the Secretary of State could've gotten confused over two different zone changes, because the only one I remember.
But you're not saying that in 2002, you had no idea that we changed that zone?
Mr. Chairman, I already.
Yeah, what you're saying is you had no idea that we changed that zone in 2002.
Mr. Chairman, I've already stated for the record.
What'd you state for the record?
That the village board approved the zone change. The date I left for Mrs. Olman to provide, and I believe she did, and I'll go along with it, it's probably accurate. It was a date in 2002. The question was, what happened with these letters from the Secretary of State? I was there, okay? I was there during the whole process. And I stated this for the record. I asked and asked and asked, "When is this zone change happening?" I suggested, on the Mr. Landscape plan, so for future reference, because we were giving approvals, and the zone had changed, he was he was now in the PI zone. And I made the suggestion, "Let's have him change the plans and state PI zone." And I was told at the time, you really should do it, but we could.
There are evidence in the record already that the Secretary of State accepted the change in 2002.
And I'm not gonna argue, Mr. Mitzner has paid for it, and it doesn't matter.
We can't say what the Secretary of State was doing in 2005, of what they may have been looking for. All we do know for sure is that the evidence demonstrates it was changed in 2002, and he knew it. So, go ahead.
Yes, but all of the other evidence also says that we were entertaining landscapers before that zone change. And honestly.
Who's with?
The zoning board.
I don't remember entertaining a landscaper. I do identify, remember entertaining requests for an office and parking. Now, the fact that he may have been a landscaper, no one has ever raised an issue of use before. They did in this case.
Right, no, I understand that, but the.
No one raised an issue before. We now have one raised. We are asked to improve our statute.
I understand that. I understand that. But would you remember entertaining us an office with parking?
Yes.
Okay. You're represented by the same attorney we were represented at the time. And I just submitted, let's say, eight documents off the top of my head, showing what we were approving. Your board and our board at the time, which was a lot more than an office with parking.
Well, the record was shown. Go ahead.
Let's stay on the last meeting with the testimony.
I thought I heard you were finished.
Huh?
Sorry, I just thought you were saying.
This isn't the way I wanted to start, but this is the direction you put me in. Mrs. Olman presented a document, held it up. It said Alan Rubin's notes. Mr. Levine, you'll recognize his handwriting. Mr. Chairman, it really surprised me, because Mrs. Olman stated it wasn't a signed document. When I was giving all this testimony, I was constantly questioned about submitting a full document. In the meantime, no one else's evidence was questioned. Mrs. Olman handed the document, said, "This looks like Mr. Rubin, the planning board chairman's notes and handwriting, where he said, made a comment that the zone should be changed to PI, and submitted that as evidence."
Are you saying that was not his handwriting?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So that is not.
Excuse me?
That's not his handwriting.
It's not his handwriting.
Okay, thank you.
It was mine. No. Doris, it's my handwriting. I got the document this morning. I remember the document.
Go ahead.
No, no. Mrs. Olman is checking. It's still a document that says the same thing. Excuse me, I should know what I said on the document. Please. I don't have to go to the zoning board for interpretation of what I wrote on the document. This document is the document I'm referring to. It's exhibit number five. It was presented to you as a document from Alan Rubin, chairman of planning. You can verify this with Alan Rubin. If this was Alan Rubin's document, Mr. Chairman, you won't be able to read it. The only thing on this document that I didn't write was the date up in top. I don't know where that came from. June 6, 2002. I don't recall the exact date of this document, but I can go through my records and possibly see, and I don't think it's important. But I just want the record to be accurate.
Thank you. We appreciate your correctness.
And again, I was questioning the map and asking the board to change it to PI. Because yes, the village board approved the zone change. It went out, it never came back. For years, I was questioning, "How come we're not changing things around?" Mr. Landscape, we got it on his plan, but then Biosphere came, and we never changed it on Biosphere, because it never changed. And it was no sense. Excuse me?
What never changed?
We never, we were told that we couldn't do it until we got the paperwork back. This is what I was told.
But it was true.
Huh? This is what I was told at the time. So just to set the record straight, this is my document.
By the way, I don't think I mentioned this at the beginning, but Mr. Levine was not at the last meeting. But he has informed me and.
I'm not saying.
Forward in public that he has listened to all the tapes from the Red Bull. That's correct? I did ask for it to be turned off. Is that a cell phone?
Yes.
I did ask for it to be turned off.
Yeah, it's on vibrate.
Excuse me?
It's on vibrate.
Well, that's not all, just.
I can't turn it off.
You want me to turn it off for you?
No, I have an 88-year-old mother's and I'm responsible for it, so. This is the emergency number.
You could've asked.
You won't hear it. It vibrates. Okay. While I get it back, I just have a question for you. I've been asking over and over again about your workshop, and then I find out the other day that you had a workshop and there was some notification.
It wasn't a workshop. We had an orientation session.
Excuse me?
We had an orientation session in the class on zones. It's not a workshop.
Doesn't that have to be a public meeting?
No. That's.
Okay. Let me go back to a couple comments that Mr. Libbert made. I'm gonna basically be repeating myself.
I wish you would.
Well, you might have.
Spent a lot of time. We appreciate it. We hear what you heard, what you said. We know what you said. We have transcripts of what you said.
I understand, but see, what concerns me.
Let's not argue it, let's do it briefly.
Okay. Yes, but what also concerns me is that when I'm testifying, I'm getting questions, which I'm not opposed to, ask me a question, fine. But other people are testifying, and it's just going as the gospel. And as I just showed you.
You know, Mr. Levine, you shouldn't read into anything we do. That means you shouldn't read into expressions, you shouldn't read into our questions in terms of, you know, you have made this an adversarial proceeding. It really isn't.
I hope not.
You have. And it really isn't. We are trying to interpret the law of this village. We appreciate everyone's effort. The fact that we're answering, asking you questions has nothing to do with who you are. It has to do solely with what you're saying and asking us to consider. That's the only thing. If we don't have questions for other people, because we don't have questions of them.
How is correcting what other people have said that is not accurate adversarial?
Have I? The way you do it and the way you've been presenting your evidence. Go ahead and give us your view of Mr. Libbert's remark. Go ahead.
I basically, Mr. Libbert keeps going back. Show me where it says it in the code. I'm gonna go back to the year 2000 again. Okay? The zoning board and the planning board. Unfortunately, the zoning board minutes don't exist at the time.
We have not considered the use in that zone regarding landscape. That had not been a question that's before us.
When was it considered in the PI zone?
I'm not saying it was.
You did in September.
I'm not saying we ever considered a use.
Okay, okay. That's reasonable. But a municipality is the body that's responsible for interpreting its own code. And this municipality, going back to the year 1999, 2000, early, late 1999, early 2000, used that in.
I'm all detached, by the way. I hear every word you say. Go ahead.
You're much better than I, than me. I'm just going by myself.
I won't comment on that.
I lose thoughts.
One, two, three.
As a village, we interpreted our code, and we did not see it necessary.
Who's "we" as a village?
The zoning board.
Not the zoning board. We never interpreted the LO zone to landscape, did we?
Yes, you approved Mr. Landscape's variances.
The issue of use was never before us. You just said, "That's reasonable." So we haven't interpreted our code regarding the use.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I grew up back.
The fact that a landscaper.
I believe, I believe it was in September. I believe it was in September. Because if you wanna put the blame on the planning board did it, the zoning board did it, we all did it, along with our consultants. Along with our experts, our consultants. I'm gonna remind you of the August 15, 2000, CDRC. Okay, where CDRC stated.
CDRC relevant to this discussion?
Yes.
Why?
Because CDRC stated that the use of landscapers is permitted use in the LO zone.
Why is that relevant to us? They're an advisory group, why is that relevant to us?
Because they're an advisory group with the legal advice coming from the village attorney, Doris Olman, who was also advising your board at the time. That's why it's germane.
We don't know what the attorney may have said to that. We don't know what advice to that comment. But it doesn't really matter. You made your point, they said what they said. We're the zoning board, which I interpreted as.
Okay. Yeah, look, I'm not here to debate.
When did that change?
I'm here to try to.
You've done it. You've given a lot of information.
I think I gave a lot of.
You've given a lot of information.
Yes.
We'll determine the relevance and accuracy of your information.
Okay.
Thank you. I think Mr. Levine has a question.
More of a statement. No, I have to say, I'm really impressed with your diligence and more impressed with your passion. I really am. Do you remember the planning board and your respected citizen of Chestnut Ridge? And I just have a very simple question. Maybe I'm naive in all this. I've heard so much testimony, listened to a lot of hate, a lot of hours. Wouldn't you, as a respected member of the board and a respected citizen of Chestnut Ridge, want this interpretation to be made to clarify this? Notwithstanding, you know, all the information. We have to take it all into account, everything that's been said. But wouldn't you want us to make the interpretation?
Yes. I've been, to set the record straight, I've been going through this for four years, back and forth with documents, okay? Three of us that are in the room today, Mr. Miller, Mr. Banther, were present back in 2000, and Mrs. Olman was present back in 2000.
You've been opposed on the application, being opposed to the application and the interpretation. On one hand, you were opposed to it, and on the other hand, you're saying, "Okay, you want the interpretation made, so I'm confused."
Okay, then.
Do you want us to make the interpretation?
Absolutely.
Then let's go ahead and do it.
Okay, let me just set the record straight. You're a zoning board. You deal with precedent. Okay? This is horrible. This application is horrible. I just don't find it acceptable. That's my feelings, only, obviously, only my feelings. But I'm entitled to them.
Okay.
You know, and that's it. Do I wanna see it settled? Yes. Do I wanna see the village get hurt where somebody else can say, "What's the difference which property I posted?" "What's the difference which property I posted?" It doesn't matter, okay? What's the difference? I wanna know, I wanna know if my neighbor can do what he's doing. And I'm gonna take out an application on your property.
Mr. Levine, I interrupt.
And so I'm the bonds that I own there.
Stop.
I'll just explain.
And I'm explaining, and I'm telling you.
They're still talking, Mr. Chairman.
You like to do the job you're being asked to do.
That's enough.
I like to do the job.
And I understand.
Can we summarize, so we can get going?
He's done.
No, he's not.
You're not done?
I'm not sure, to be honest with you. You have other members from the public here. You, you sidetracked me on going one way. I'd like to look over my notes. You can hear from someone else. But I am almost, I'm, I'm towards the end.
Go look over your notes. We'll hear from somebody else.
Thank you.
All right, is there anybody else in the public who wants to be heard on this application? Sir?
Based on the agenda, Zachary Sirotowicz.
How do you spell your last name? Where do you live, sir?
Eleven-hour drive, Monsey.
You affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, sir?
Yes. Uh, my question is, there are other landscapers that have been approved in the past in this district? Is that correct?
What do you mean by this district?
In the zone.
Not where this landscaper, not where.
In LO zone, is that what he's in?
This particular landscaper, if there is a landscaper who, who accepted to withdraw his application, that landscaper's in an LO zone.
Okay, but there has been approval for a landscaper, other landscapers in the area in an LO zone at one point or another?
We have, up to mine now, the zoning board.
Well, what I'm trying, well.
I'm just trying to tell you, the zoning board has not specifically approved a landscaping use. Why use? That is question.
But there are, okay, but there are.
People may be using it, but we have approved it.
It's not crystal clear. That's all I'm getting at.